I'll share your screen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, April 3, 2023, and this is a work session for the Salisbury City Council. We have quite a few items on the agenda today. And first off, we're going to start with the update from the SBY Airport. And Chris Davidson, who is the Assistant Airport and Business Development Manager, has a presentation for us. Mr. Davidson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As he said, I'm Chris Davidson, Deputy Director and Business Development Knucklehead at Salisbury Airport. Thank you all for sharing your time with me today. I'm going to push through real quick and just kind of go over some of the big highlights going on at the airport. This is actually a regional crown jewel, and what we're able to do is really increase the region's value with the airport. So bear with me while I share my screen. Okay, so the big takeaway here is that your airport here in Salisbury is an economic multiplier. I'm going to go over a few numbers. And we can see that. There we go. So total employment, the Maryland Aviation Association back in 2018 did a very robust study to show how much airport brain to the state of Maryland. And just at Salisbury Airport, it's estimated there's just over 1,600 jobs, business revenue of 78 million, and then personal income, 84 million, state and local taxes, 15 million provided to you by the airport. So it's huge, but it doesn't even take into the context some of the other things, like other businesses locating here because they can get in and out of the airport quickly, really enhances. So. Back in 2017, 2018, if anybody hasn't been in the airport, I want to talk about some of the terminal upgrades. Just here, the welcome sign, we improved it to be more SBY-centric and use that as our, put our logo out there. The terminal's completely been renovated with a beach themed terminal, really kind of keeping close to our Eastern Shore roots. Hangers, as you can see on the left here, this white hanger was a little dilapidated, so we invested some money and now have hangers that are going to last longer with corrosion prevention and decent paint jobs. You look here, we've got our T-hangers, and the asphalt that was in front of them needed to be repaired, so we have completed that. And now there is new asphalt, or at least a top layer on all our new T-hangers. And that's all been done since 2017, 2018. Here's kind of our big ongoing projects that we've got coming up. This is the big ones, maintenance, SRE, snow removal equipment building, ARF facility, it's Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Facility. So this is going to house all of the airport's equipment. It's going to be, you know, dump trucks and snow plows and sweepers and all that big equipment that we need to get into a building so the weather doesn't wear it down, and also so we can perform maintenance on it inside a climate-controlled area, especially when it's snowing or raining. So that project's out to bid and waiting on the grant from the FAA, expect that, hopefully to break ground in the next couple of months. Next is, we just purchased another ARF Oshkosh vehicle, so now we have two. One brand-new, one only 10, 11-years-old firefighting vehicle, provides us a primary and a backup, which is very important to commercial services. Another project we just completed is rehabilitate Taxway Alpha. Asphalt's just not cheap at airports because it's not the same stuff that's put on your driveways or your highways because the tires of a large airplane are relatively small comparative to the size of the aircraft. And what that does is it creates a high PSI onto the asphalt, so it's a real high grade. So you can see just basically 6,400 feet of asphalt was $5.3 million. Piedmont Improvement, so we've got, Piedmont's got two different hangers, and they were supposed to be separate buildings, and over time, they built an office complex between the two buildings right here. And that has provided lots of opportunities for leaks because the water pours in from both hangers onto that center. And we've got to fix that roof and provide a better facility for Piedmont. Next is Piedmont Air Traffic Control Improvements. The old Ward Building, Piedmont's renting out most of that and air traffic control. That tower hasn't been touched in 20 years, so we're putting new roofs on both buildings. We're updating the exterior of the Ward Building to be more modern and look like a building everybody wants to work out of these days. So very excited about getting that project underway. Rental car lot improvements, that's going to make it easier to return cars and get them in and out. For those of you who have been to the airport, it has been some, you know, learning curve with the new park, excuse me, paid parking lot. And this project is complete, and I think we pretty much got the bugs worked out. We're going to put a canopy over it. That way, when customers or passengers have their windows down, they don't get wet while they're paying for their parking. Next, this is the big one, the runway extension. We're going to take it from 6,400 feet to 7,600 feet. And what this does is it allows the current aircraft that Piedmont or American Airlines uses at our airport to be completely full of passengers going to Charlotte. Right now, they're selling, they're not able to fill it up with all the passengers due to the runway length, so we're going to have to extend that to 7,600 feet. Piedmont or American Airlines expected to keep that aircraft for quite so many years, so this is a good investment for everybody all the way around. Broadband access, so we now have fiber to the entire airport, and we brought it around to the community over there, so that's very exciting. Then we got a 22-acre solar farm that's going to come in, that's going to power all county facilities and reduce our reliance on other fossil fuels. Cell tower, it's going to go down there. If you've ever driven down Airport Road, you know that you lose cell service down here in the woods area. So very excited to get that cell tower up and running. That's probably not going to be breaking ground until late fall, early spring next year because the FAA is working through their process. Autonomous Innovation Center, this is a new drone hanger we built not too long ago. And inside of it, so this is, we all know this is the next step, right? At some point, drones are going to really kind of take over and do a lot of the work. Passenger service will get there someday, but that's not going to be in our lifetime. Most people just aren't comfortable with it yet. But the purpose of it is to test drones and get them certified safe-to-fly in the national airspace system. And working with University of Maryland and a few other players to create a hub-and-spoke system so they can launch drones from Pax River to Chrisfield or Salisbury or Wallops and all those. And so this is a crucial step in getting this through the FAA process. And last but not least, and maybe the most important thing, you can't overstate the importance of this AMT school that University of Maryland Eastern Shore has partnered with SWED and Piedmont to create an aircraft mechanic school. On this chart right here, you see the black line is basically showing the supply of current mechanics, and the blue line is showing the demand for mechanics. One thing about mechanics is a general rule, they don't move. And so when you are able to train them here, you're able to keep them here, and Piedmont's got jobs for them. And that's our goal, is to create a robust workforce to not only supply our airline, but also provide talent for other companies to move in. This is a huge win for the region that they've put together for us. I know I have crushed through this and laid a lot of information out in just a very short amount of time in respect to everything else you'll have on your agenda, but I did want to ask if there's any questions for me.
Any questions from the council?
For the drones, is that, is it FFA or FCA or whoever has to approve the airspace, is that in process or is that something you're proposing?
It's in process. So that's a multi-layered question.
Okay.
The short answer is, inside of our towered airspace, our tower can control what they do, right? Because you have line of sight and you're able to make sure that they're safe and stay away from other aircraft or other passenger, or other, you know, buildings or anything right there. The issue is when the controller no longer sees the aircraft, the FAA doesn't want that to happen yet. And we're working with, well, mostly University of Maryland is working with the FAA to create a test program to be able to launch that drone from Pax River and lose sight of it, and then we pick it up here in Salisbury or Chrisfield or some other place on the Eastern Shore.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The jobs. Now, you said there's 1,620. Are those jobs available now, or will they be ready or ready for employment after everything has been taken care of?
So that study was done in 2018 by Maryland Aviation Association, and they're saying that those 1,600 jobs already exist because of the airport. So you've got the, you know, obviously the Piedmont employees, and you've got your TSA employees and airport employees, but you've also now have, you know, more people going to hotels and restaurants because they're coming to the region and not driving. So that's the estimate from MAA on how many jobs are currently here.
Okay. Thank you.
How many of these jobs are coming from, like, University of Maryland Eastern Shore has this training program? Like, how many students do you guys end up seeing come out of that program every year looking for work? And do you guys have those jobs available to them? I see the chart says, but that's not specific to the...
Yes, that's a regional, or excuse me, that's a nation, national chart. You're absolutely correct. The current forecast is to have 25 students go through this one-year program at University of Maryland Eastern Shore. We are hoping that everything gets approved by the FAA so they can start classes this fall. If it doesn't, it'll start in January, but that's really, it's out of our hands. SWED and American and UMES have just jumped through every hoop, and they're really doing a bang-up job to get this accomplished.
That's awesome. I think that's great. Anything that we can do to combat the brain drain that we have from people going to school here and then leaving the area, if we can give them jobs here, that's great.
That's absolutely the goal.
I think the point of the mechanic school is, you know, the past couple of years, they were going through closing some of these regional airports. And our goal was to have a program like this that makes Salisbury a necessity, and it's a lot less likely if we've got a majority of the mechanics here repairing airplanes. It's a reason for planes to come here, and it's a necessary airport that would reduce the risk of it being shut down.
That's awesome.
Megan, you have any questions? Chris, thanks for coming out. We appreciate your time and your presentation. Mr. Mayor, you have any questions or comments?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
You have to sit for the next two hours now. Feel free to go.
Next up is an ordinance to accept Department of Housing and Community Development Operating Assistance Grant for 2023 Maryland Folk Festival. And this is not Laura Soper.
Laura's here, she is on.
She's on Zoom?
She's on Zoom.
I mean, I got the other Soper who's in the room, but I don't.
We hear you.
Okay. Yeah, this, he's, this is probably out of his line of expertise. Ms. Soper, how are you today?
I'm good. How is council?
Good. We have eyes on your husband, just so you know.
Yeah. We're doing double duty, so I'm in front of daycare, ready to pick up the kids. But first, I wanted to go over the ordinance to accept the funding from the Department of Housing and Community Development. We were awarded $20,000, and it will be utilized to provide funding for the 2023 Maryland Folk Festival. And it will be used to fund the stipends for some of the various coordinators that we hire for that event. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Is everybody in favor of moving this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So you're good. It'll be on Monday's agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next up is a budget amendment for parking garage automation and upgrades, and this is Field Operations Director Mike Dryden. Mr. Dryden, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, council. This ordinance will have the effect to authorize the mayor Heath to transfer $150,000 from the Parking Fund and redirect those resources to be used for parking automation project in the Parking Capital Fund. This project will allow Parking Division to further automate some of the parking operations. This will result in a more streamlined parking process and bring our parking into the future, more or less. Some of the things that it'll incorporate will be QR readers, cameras that we can capture license plates on, so to continue generating revenue through our parking system.
Comments?
Sounds fantastic.
Come a long way from just dropping quarters.
Right.
Yeah, a long way.
We go back.
And from not dropping them.
Yeah. Everybody's good with moving this forward?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next up is a budget amendment to reallocate funds for the filter project at the Waterworks Park, or the Wastewater Treatment Plant. We have Waterworks Director Corey Cameron. Is she on?
Hey, Corey.
Corey, how are you?
Okay. The Department of Waterworks would like to amend the Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund. Funds were appropriated for a dump truck in FY '23. We had funds appropriated for a dump truck in the previous year, and we still have not, due to supply chain shortages, not been able to receive that dump truck. We will not actually physically have the dump truck from last year until FY '24. It is on order. So we feel it's a better use right now to reallocate these funds over to by the filter clause for our tertiary filters at the Wastewater Treatment Plant at this time. And that will remove it from the FY ' '24 CIP we had requested. So we can reallocate these funds now where they're needed for the maintenance of the Wastewater Treatment Plant, and then we'll be better suited to purchase a new dump truck in FY '25, hopefully when the supply chain gets moving again.
Any questions or comments from the council? Is everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Corey.
All right. Thank you.
Next up is an ordinance to accept CTI grant, Housing and Community Development Director Ron Strickler. You are not Ron Strickler.
Brett Sanders. Yes. So just filling in for Ron. The CTI program, we're already operating. We get funding in two pieces. So this would be funding to facilitate the program from April until the end of June, when we would then start our '24 fiscal year part of the funding.
So the amount of that transfer is $12,562?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council on this?
None.
Everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
You got off easy today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Next up is a resolution to adopt a new Board of Appeals Handbook. We have City Planner Brian Soper, the other half of the Soper team here at Salisbury. How you doing, Brian?
Good. How are you all doing?
Good.
So just before you now, we have, as part of our continued efforts to create the Board of Appeals before they have their first meeting, City Legal and with some input from the planning staff has put together a handbook that would be adopted prior to their first meeting, that they would then, that the board would then go over at their first meeting and basically is their rules and procedures. So typically, you would not see this again pending approval until if and when the board were to make changes to it, which we don't foresee.
Questions or comments?
No.
All right. Yeah, I've read through this and looks pretty standard. I assume it was approved by Megan Kayton. Did she take a look at it too, or I don't?
Yeah, because we consolidated our board having a handbook that updates to that, so yeah. Yeah, I don't think HR needs to look at it. It's just a legal operating procedure for the board.
Got you. Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? None? Everybody okay with moving this forward?
No, fine.
All right. Thank you. We'll put it on next week's agenda. Next up is ordinance to change the fee schedule to include fees for Board of Appeals. Mr. Soper, it's you again.
Thank you again. So before us, we have, these were continued as part, again, in the Board of Appeals efforts to include new fees for Housing and Community Development. The cases that they would bring, these fees were not previously included. Also, in this fee schedule change, it provides clarifying language to development review fees. Take note that at this time, they have not changed. And then the last one is probably the one of most importance in this is to split the water meter fees to accommodate for supply chain increases and to add and to split the installation costs separately. So we would anticipate that as Water Works gets the pricing for meters, that this might be changed periodically to reflect that change in cost for the actual cost of a meter.
Questions or comments?
No.
Everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yep.
And next up is JD Oliver Bar International Annexation Introduction.
So this is just, so again, I have to take over for the great Bill Holland on these. So this is just the introduction to say that we have received this petition for annexation. This is the Bar International property, going under JD Oliver, that is north of the center at Salisbury. Right now, the next action, no action is needed by the council tonight. The next item would be to have the Planning Commission provide a zoning recommendation that's currently scheduled for April 20. So at this time, this is merely just for your information.
You said April 20?
Would be the Planning Commission meeting, yes. We anticipate the zoning being general commercial.
Questions or comments?
No.
Thank you for that. That's everything.
That's everything for me.
I think that's everything for you. I don't see your name on here again.
He was a star today.
Thank you.
Now, Al.
Nice.
All right. So next up is an ordinance to accept IMSAC grant funds for expenses associated with Bundle Up and Get Outside. We have our ABCD Director, Alan Swiger.
Yes, and I also brought Scott Roberts, if you guys haven't met him. He's our recently appointed Assistant Director. So, yeah, the Maryland State Arts Council offered us $4,000 for a grant to be utilized to provide artist stipends and supplies for the 2023 Bundle Up and Get Outside program. For you that don't know what that might be, it's an art project that we actually just completed in March down at the city parks.
It was very nice. I loved it.
Caroline and Dan O'Hare did a wonderful job.
They did. They really did.
Questions or comments from the council?
No.
Everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
We'll put it on next week's agenda. Next up is an ordinance to accept NEA GFAP funds for the 81st National Folk Festival. Mr. Swiger?
Correct. NEA is a national endowment for the arts. We were awarded a grant for arts project to help out with the 81st National Folk Festival. So this would be reimbursement of the funds spent on artists' fees, interpretive signage, marketing, and photography.
Comments? Guess everybody's okay with moving this forward to accept some grant funds?
Yes.
Why not?
Absolutely. Free?
And last up is an ordinance to add a new position to the ABC Department.
Yeah, so this is to amend the authorized positions count to include a new event coordinator for the ABCD Department. I'm not asking for any additional funding for this position as it is a transition between the relationship with the Salisbury Arts Entertainment District and the city going forward. So there's a surplus of funds available in our Development Services accounts for that.
Any questions or comments?
I like that it's already covered.
That's right. No funds needed.
I brought you money, and I saved money.
Stay here, Alice.
I've told you lately, you're our favorite.
Did he go train with the fire department? Any, so no further questions or comments? Everybody is okay with moving this forward?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Free money is free money.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
It's texted Heather to tell.
All right. So at this time, we will adjourn the legis, or the work session, and we will move into a special meeting for a legislative session. And my mother is calling me, but she'll have to wait.
She always calls or texts me in the middle of one of these meetings.
That's how they are, they are. My mother would do it, too.
So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2788 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Synchronize, swimming down at the end of the table. I hear it.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Ordinance number 2788, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, accepting the donation of a police canine to the Salisbury Police Department. As mentioned, this is before you for second reading. There's been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2788 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Do we have the dog's name yet?
I was literally just getting ready to ask that.
I didn't know if anyone knew what the canine's name was.
Do we know what the dog's name is?
I think we do know.
Lucky?
Nope.
You know what?
You're just pulling that out of a hat.
Prayerful. He's just done anything prayerful.
See, I...
I don't, I don't see...
It's chaos.
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 That sounds like a canine.
I love it.
Must have been a puppy.
I love that a lot.
For real?
Any public comments on...
I do not see any comments in the chat. If there's any public comments for the people out there.
Or special meeting and not to wait till next week.
Yeah. Cool, cool, cool. Good.
Rob's on there, and IFFA, IAFF is on there, but I don't think so. Nope.
We'll go to administration comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'll second Angela's comment and leave it at that. I was going to name one of my daughter's chaos, but I chose not to.
It wasn't going to be my friend, I know.
But I did want to congratulate and thank everybody who participated yesterday, Saturday, I'm sorry, in the marathon. It went off without a hitch. One bolt of lightning scared me a little, but it was well-attended. There were over 1,000 runners.
Wow.
And everything held up well. I think, I want to thank the police department, the sheriff's office, and Maryland State Police for their help along the route. And I want to commend the Public Works Field Ops for their speediness in getting the city back to normal. So, thank you, everyone.
All right. We'll start, Mrs. Gregory?
Just want to remind folks, the hops on the river is coming up, and I've signed up to serve, so come on out and get a drink. That is going on on the, was it 15?
15.
The 15. I think it's running from one to four. Yep. So come on out.
Miss Jackson?
Yes. She's on it. She's on it. She's on it, she's on it.
Would you yield this to me for one second?
Yes, of course.
I forgot to mention, this week, there's going to be Happy Hour with the mayor. So, I'm drinking tonic water.
What day?
What day?
Wed, Wednesday? Let me just check.
Guys, he's buying us around.
Time and location, sir.
It's 4:00 to 6:00 PM. 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and it is on Wednesday, the 5th.
The 5th, okay, and where?
At the Brick Room. Shorewalk. Thank you, I appreciate it, Angela.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jackson?
Okay, me, 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 no, it's like, let me stop. I'd like to commend everyone who came out to the Vietnam Veterans Day Celebration last Wednesday, March 29th, it was phenomenal. I'd like to thank our acting mayor, Jack Heath, for being present. I'd like to thank Angela Blake, City Council, District 5, for being present, our former acting Wacomico County Executive and Fruitland Town Manager, John Posoto, who was there, Maryland State Secretary, Department of Housing and Community, Jacob Day, who was one of our guest speakers, and Maryland State Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Tony Woods, who was present and gave some elegant, eloquent speeches, and everything was just phenomenal, right there, to the, the atmosphere of the people, the food, it was just, it was just lovely and I appreciate everybody who came out and showed love to the Vietnam veterans. They deserved the love, they fought wars and, and all the veterans that were there, not only just the Vietnam veterans, but all the veterans far and near. We always have to show them that we appreciate them and that we love them because they are the ones who have kept us safe thus far. I also would like to reiterate the community Easter egg hunt that will take place April the 8th at the Waterside Park from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. There will be games, fun, free food, prizes, music, everything. This is sanctioned by Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activities, We Here Auto Club, actually the Thunder Guards who come in, and then other community entities who take precedent in helping our community thrive through families, children and families. So, we would like for everyone to come out, everything is free. Please come out and enjoy your day with your, with your children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blake?
Just a question, I wanted to follow up. Has there been any more progress with the draft with, between the fire department and the union's language in that contract?
Yes, and that, on 4/17, we will be presenting that to council for the first time in the work session, so if you're talking about the labor code?
Yeah.
Yep, that'll be coming before you guys, on the 17th, we will be circulating a draft before that, so you guys will have what we will be presenting in advance, so you'll see that early next week, yep.
Okay, very well. And of course, I do wanna say, if you are healthy enough, please donate blood. Our, our area is just chronically in the critical air, area, we're very low in blood and one pint can save three lives, so if you're fortunate enough to be healthy, please donate blood.
Just wanna, so April, what was April 8th, but what was the time?
2:00 to 4:00.
2:00 to 4:00, okay, thank you. So, on my end and on my neck of the woods, we'll actually be hosting the Newton Community Center Community Resource and Job Fair on April 21st from 12:00 to 5:00. It's open to all, any ages, you know, so if you're a high schooler, getting out of school, trying to get into the job force, you'll be able to talk to specialists who can work with you on a resume. Apparently, they're going to have placement services, resume overlooks, and, you know, connections to workshop programs in the area, so please feel free to swing by, April 21st from 12:00 to 5:00.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have anything, so at this time, we will be moving into a closed session and, and this is to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, see authority under the Maryland Open Meetings Law, annotated Code of Maryland provisions, Article 3-305B7, and this is to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to move into closed session.
Some move.
Second.
This one to Ms. Blake. All those in favor of moving into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, we are in closed session. Good evening, everyone. The Salisbury, Salisbury City Council met in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And at this time, we are adjourned from...
And you discussed...
Oh, and we also discussed legal strategy with our legal counsel for the city. At this time, we, we are adjourned.